Michelle, you ready? Good evening. I would like to call to order the Wednesday, June 11th edition of the Reno City Planning Commission. And if you would join Commissioner Hawkins in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Michelle, can I have your call, please?
Mark Johnson.
Here.
Britten Griffith.
President.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
Paul Levis.
Here.
John Marshall is absent. Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number three, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. And I do have a request to speak for him. Just a reminder to the rest of the crowd this evening, if you do have a comment on this item or one of our public hearing items under number seven, please be sure to fill one of these out with Michelle and we will get you up to the podium for your comment. So we will start off with Tammy Holt Still.
Tammy Holt Still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee. The water's still there. We're still here for the record. I'd like to start off with, last Tuesday was kind of a big win for the residents out in Lemon Valley. Prado Ranch North was turned down by the planning commission. We did have a lot of residents out there unlike just Danny and I on a normal basis. We had filled the planning, or the commissioners, Washoe County Commissioners' room full. So it was a good turnout, good response. So I was really happy about that. When it comes to Lemon Valley, one of the things I think is very important for this committee would be the fact of the master plan for Lemon Valley, that when you're annexing in, that you don't look, because this was directly asked of Prado, why did you only annex this part of the plan, your PUD and not all of it? And his words were, because Washoe County wouldn't change the zoning. So they're looking at you to broker and change the zoning from rural to industrial and heavy residential. So, and that valley can't take it. One of the reasons that we say that valley can't take it, of course, the water. But every, maybe she'll reduce it down, every resident that we can get to do this is sending this to every official, from the President of the United States, all the way to city employees, or city staff, any elected official. This states that between rapid infiltration, aquifer injection, development, and affluent, which is stormwater runoff or affluent, that that needs to be addressed. A geomorphic study to show what the valleys can take. You have three lakes up on the north side that look like this. Still, each one of those lakes are full. It's not going to take much for them to overflow. I've driven all the way around White's Lake, and it is only two feet away from Cold Springs Drive. It's about four feet away from 395. So it's not going to take much for these lakes to go over. And putting in Stone Gate for the stormwater runoff and the affluent, it's got to go somewhere. More development, more affluent, more stormwater runoff, the things that have happened so far aren't working. Amazon's a good example. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only request to speak for him I have on this item. Anyone else wishing to make a comment on this item, general public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item four then, approval of the minutes. These are the minutes from our May 30th, 2018 meeting, looking for a motion if there aren't any changes. Mr. Weiskie.
So move. Commissioner Hawkins, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. We will move on to item number five, city council liaison reports.
I do not have any items from Councilwoman Breckus this evening.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on then to item number six, election of officers. This is our annual opportunity to elect a new chairman and a new vice chairman. And so I will, at this point, ask for a nomination for chairman.
Commissioner Griffith, I will make a motion for Mr. Mark Johnson.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have a motion for Commissioner Johnson as chair. Do I have a second? Commissioner Levis?
Commissioner Levis, I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Congratulations. I'm going to carry through this item though.
Please do.
Commissioner Johnson, to get our vice chairman dialed in here. So looking for a motion then for election of a vice chairman. Commissioner Weiskie.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Griffith for the position of vice chair.
Okay. Excellent. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hawkins?
Commissioner Hawkins, second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have new officers and I just want to say, before I relinquish the microphone to Commissioner Johnson, that it's been my absolute pleasure to chair this commission over the last two years, and I thank the other commissioners for giving me the opportunity to do so. And appreciated working with you and I look to, look forward to scooting down the way here on the dais and being able to lob comments as Commissioner Weiskie does so well. So with that, we will take just a few minute recess. We'll switch some chairs around and we'll re-adjourn here in a minute. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order and I guess as the new chair, I will thank the commissioners for their unanimous support in moving me into this position. And I obviously have some large shoes to fill, so I will attempt to do that. And so the first action that I'm going to do... Size 13, Mark. That's what I got. That's what I got. All right, while you're there. I'm there. I'm there. So the first thing I'm going to do is mess with the agenda, because now I'm in charge. We are going to move item 7.4, which is the day bake master plan and PUD zoning map amendments. I'm going to move that up as our first public hearing item, and then we will have a quick presentation from staff, open it up for public comment, and then move on after that. So Brooke, if you would like to come forward.
Good evening, commissioners. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the Record. Good evening, new vice chair, or vice chair Griffin and new chair Johnson. On this item, staff would request that we, a continuance with a date certain of July 9th, 2018, 19, excuse me.
Okay. All right. We will take that in, since this is a public, I guess it's a public hearing.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Weiskie. Brooke, if you would, can you give us a little background to why we would want to do this tonight, why we're not ready?
Yes. Per discussion at the workshop, we discussed density quite a bit, but with that and the housing came an affordability component to that. With going through that, how that was structured and what that would look like with the applicant, took more time for staff to analyze that. We worked with legal and went through that whole process of how that would ultimately look. And that's the main reason.
Okay. So we will, as a commission, we will determine if we can push that forward, but because this is a public hearing, I will and I have at least one request to speak on this item. We'll open public comment and allow that to happen before we bring it back to the commission. So with that, I have a request to speak for him from Kim Rodemeyer.
I'm sorry, what was the date that they're moving it to?
The request was, it was for July 19th.
Oh, I thought he said the 9th. Okay, 19th.
Yeah.
If I speak tonight, can I speak again next week? Okay, great. My name is Kim Rodemeyer. I'm representing the Upper Southeast Communities Coalition. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that protects, works to protect floodplains and wetlands in Washoe County. We are adamantly opposed to this development and the density going in, in the last areas of flood storage for the entire Truckee Meadows. I'm just going to leave it at that tonight and I'll do my huge, entire three-minute presentation next week. But our coalition, who represents probably over 2,000 Truckee Meadows residents, are in opposition of this development going in, in this area, because of the historic nature of flooding and mercury that is found in the area and their inadequate mitigation and their inadequate studying of the mercury that's out there. So I will see you next week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? It's the only form I have. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment on this item before I bring it back to the commission? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Obviously, staff has recommended date certain postponement to next week. So I don't know if there's any comments on that or motion, where are the other? Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion. Seeing no other comments, please. Okay. I would like to move to continue this item date certain to July 19th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Commissioner Griffith, I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? We will carry and we will see you again next week. Okay. So now we'll get back on to the agenda and move to item 7.1, case number LDC 18-00081, Somerset 1A. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant's representative. That was quick.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group here, representing Desert Wind Homes. Representatives from Desert Wind are here with me tonight, along with Gabe Whitler with Odyssey Engineering, the project engineer. Let's see if we can get this moving here.
Mike, is there anything on the key?
Is there something holding the mouse down, maybe?
Do you have, do you have your paper on that?
I think that's it. There you go. It's my fault. Sorry about that.
It's your time you're wasting.
The project site is located right at the First Roundabout in Somerset. This is, to give you a frame of reference, this is the town center here, the First Roundabout as you come down Somerset Parkway. The project site is just under 70 acres. We're proposing a tentative map with 62 single-family units. Village 1A was actually approved in the Somerset PUD for 96 units, attached units. So we're actually reducing density quite a bit from what is already approved in the PUD handbook, and we're essentially keeping the same configuration in terms of the roadway and that sort of thing. And I'll get into that a little bit more as we move forward. The special use permit is required for cuts and fills, as well as hillside development under the ordinance. This is an overall site plan. It shows we have two access points, one here and then one connecting down to the existing road that connects into the First Roundabout in Somerset. It does, the design does comply with all the PUD standards, and if you read the handbook, the road essentially follows the same alignment as what was in the PUD in order to minimize the grading. This is the landscape plan. Approximately 60% of the site is landscaped. We'll be adding pockets of trees along the retaining walls, similar to what's been done out in Somerset already, if you see, to give that natural appearance and even include some new rock outcroppings. And then, of course, revegetating any disturbed slopes. The existing trailhead that's out there now where people park is actually located in the right-of-way, so we'll be relocating that and formalizing the trailhead parking right here, and then we'll be perpetuating the existing trail through the project and providing all the connections. So the trail will not go away and the parking area will actually be improved with this plan. This is an overlay that the area that you see in gray is actually the project boundaries. This kind of shows the lots coming up along. And then we have some photo simulations looking from the town center up to the site. This is taken, I believe, from the third or fourth roundabout looking southeast back towards the project site. This was presented to the Ward 5 NAB in May. As you'll see in their comments, they were generally very supportive of the project, felt that it was compatible with the area and complied with the PUD handbook. I think you'll hear tonight some concerns related to two points of access and whether our secondary, or the access down to the roundabout should become a secondary gated access. The NAB was pretty clear in their comments that they appreciated that being an open, full access, not only for, you know, emergency access, but I think it provides for better overall traffic flows. This is only 62 units, so it's not going to generate a large number of cars that will be going down that road anyway. In fact, it's a reduction of over 30 units from what was approved. And I think it just makes sense from an overall circulation perspective to keep that as an open road. As I mentioned, Gabe Whitler with Odyssey Engineering is here. If you have any issues or questions related to the grading, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Mike. We'll let you know. Follow it up with a presentation from staff. Jeff, good evening.
Good evening and congratulations, Chair Gower, or Chair Johnson. I've got to get used to announcing Chair Gower.
It's been two years.
Right, exactly. It just kind of rolls off the tongue, so I got to get used to it. Jeff Borcard, Associate Planner for the Record. As Mr. Raely mentioned, this is a reduction in what was originally approved as part of the PUD. 96 units were originally approved and the applicant's proposing 62. So if you look, me, pull up the PUD handbook here, so you can actually see what was originally contemplated here. This area right here is where the proposed project is. Let me orient this north real quick. So you can see there's the little tail right here, and then there's the horseshoe around the ridge line. And essentially, they're following exactly what was originally contemplated there. This is within the cluster, the single-family cluster village. If you're all familiar with Cluster, it's where typically you could build on a whole entire site residential, but they're clustering the homes. So this was built into the standards in the PUD handbook about what's required and minimum lot sizes, things like that, and how the grading has to function. You could potentially do townhomes here, the applicant's proposing single-family detached residential, which is a little bit more consistent with what already exists in Somerset 1A. And so almost half of the site is going to be undisturbed and 53.32 acres will be permanently dedicated as open space, indeed restricted as such. So it will stay in perpetuity. That includes the trail system that runs through the site, which will all be required to be maintained by the homeowners association. And the handbook does contain very detailed standards in terms of grading, in terms of what the trails have to look like, the architecture. As you can tell, there is consistency throughout all of Somerset, because this handbook contains very detailed standards. In addition to that, we've included various conditions of approval on the project, including the placement of trees to help screen. This is one of the villages that actually doesn't require trees. So we're actually placing trees to help create a visual buffer to the, to the proposed retaining walls. In addition to that, one of the biggest concerns and what we worked with the applicant the most on was the grading on this site. And so originally, they had proposed cutting into this hill right here. And if you think about this project, it's almost like a horseshoe, just slipping onto an existing ridge. And so we wanted to try to keep it that way. And so what the applicant did was actually reduce the grading here, which originally was this, almost this entire slope. They, by moving a lot over to this direction, so this had minimal impact, whereas this had a significant impact. And so by moving that, they've actually reduced the amount of grading that's necessary on the project. And then within that, there are requirements to create undulating slopes. Let me take this exhibit off. Undulating slopes, embedded rocks, plugs of revegetation, and it ideally will create a natural slope that you see throughout all of Somerset. So this should be consistent with most of the projects within the area. And so with that, I'm available for any questions. Staff is recommending approval, subject to all the conditions. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. This is a public hearing and I have several requests to speak forums, but before I do that, I will bring it back to the commission for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Weiskie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I rode to the site and I spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Gower, very familiar with the site. Commissioner Johnson visited the site?
Commissioner Griffith visited the site.
Commissioner Levis, I've visited the site.
Okay, thank you. So as Commissioner Gower said before he left and moved down the way, if you have any requests to speak, if you'd like to speak on this or any item, please fill out one of these forms with Michelle. I have several of these here, so I will just go in order, starting with Deborah Garrity, followed by Shelley Berman. And apologies for any mispronunciations of your names. Please state your name when you get to the podium and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. This is, I'm Deb Garrity, and I live right on Stone Bluff Way in the village. And my concern, or my question, is how far down to that rock ditch are those homes going to come? Will that stone bluff that actually sits up, you know, midway, will that be removed? And then my other concern, we get a lot of rain from, you know, time to time, and it, that whole ditch fills up with water. And my concern is that, you know, it's going to get worse if there's, you know, cutting into the hills and the rocks. I also worry about the rocks coming loose, because they have in Somerset. We all, I've lived there over 10 years, and whose responsibility is that if that should happen? And, you know, would that be the homeowners? If there's danger, you know, of them tumbling down, you know, the bankment, that concerns me. And also the trees that are being planted... And also the trees that are being planted for screening, will they be planted? I think they're going to be 25 feet apart. Will they be planted so that we cannot see any of the hill? It's been a beautiful place to live, so we're just hoping that all of our beautiful wildlife and stuff are still visible to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Berman, followed by Daniel Gallagher.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Gallagher and I am a current resident of River Hill Way. I'm the homeowner. And just for reference, I own this home right here, okay? And I was always aware this neighborhood was going in. However, when I purchased, and this is the most recent Somerset newsletter with the most recent master plan that they publish, when I purchased in this neighborhood, it was my understanding that at the end of my street was to be a cul-de-sac and it would connect to another cul-de-sac and it would be joined by a gated emergency access road. So while I do appreciate that they have reduced this down to 62 from 96, I don't appreciate that now my road is going to be the main entrance. I have seven homes on my street. Seven to 69 is like a nine times increase in traffic for my kids. Also, the density, while less, is still certainly far more than my neighborhood. We have large lots with large setbacks. We're not allowed to have privacy fencing. We have split rail fencing only. And I do believe that this neighborhood will detract from the value of my home, okay? I really have no opposition to the neighborhood itself. I have opposition to them making my road the main road in. It wasn't the plan that the main entrance was to be down here. And this is an emergency access fire road only. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I lose Shelley Berman? Okay.
My name is Shelley Berman and I also live on Stone Bluff Way, which is right where this is going to take place. Deb covered a lot of things, but I know that we are sitting on a fault and that fault goes under this area. I'm wondering how much consideration was given to that? And that, this is reclaimed land and it's filled land, which is very unstable. We have had issues with the falling rock already in certain homes right on Stone Bluff Way. So this thing about putting rocks underneath, I don't know how that keeps all that from happening. And considering the rain possibilities and the flooding is also an issue. I don't know. I've read some statements that were made like, this will not disturb the wildlife. We do have deer, we have coyotes, we have so many animals that consider that this their home. And I, and I think that Nevada doesn't have too many environmental laws. But I mean, certainly some of that should be taken into consideration. Now they'll have, it used to be a throughway for deer and now there's very few, but we still get them. I mean, how, where are they going to go, you know, all this? And they talked about walkout basement. Now is that going to face our homes? We, we have a pathway right before the ditch and I don't know how far up. I mean, how does that help in people not like looking into our yards, which are, that is our front door, Stone Bluff Way. Our garages are on the street. So everything, our patio and everything is right there, you know? And that's what we're going to be looking at, you know, there are these new homes. Also, I'm concerned about the fire danger when they're building these homes and what precautions are going to be taken to make sure that, I mean, there's a lot of dried grass, although now it's nice and green. It's great because of the rains. And she spoke about the, the rock walls. We are concerned about that. So, I don't know. That's just kind of some of the stuff. And how many stories are these homes going to be? How high up are they going to go and reach up into the, to the hill? Because we are concerned about privacy and that's a big issue. So I thank you for listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Travis Smith, followed by Armando Cornelio.
Hello, my name is Travis Smith. I'm a homeowner on 1455 River Hill Way. I just bought the custom lot. And one thing I'm, I want to make aware is that all these hillside homes are all deed restricted homes, which in, as far as height limits. So we're actually have to build our houses into the site. And when I'm looking through this grading that they are proposed out there, I don't see any type of angulation or any type of change in slopes. It's a two to one. I just want to make sure that under the conditions, that this is going to be a natural looking slope as they are 100 feet horizontal, they're 100 feet high in some locations that directly are across from my property. The other thing is, when I purchased this property, I was not anticipating the increase in traffic flow through here. I thought I was buying in a secluded area as you saw the two separate cul-de-sacs with a small access way, fire access going through them. So I, I knew there was going to be development when I purchased this home and I just wanted it to be done to the standards of Somerset where, where I can have eroding embankments. And it is a natural, appealing finished product. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Armando Cornelio.
Good afternoon. So I may have the biggest complaint of everybody and I'm sorry for that. But as my neighbor here, I bought the lot at the end of the cul-de-sac, right? So this is my lot here. So I think I have the greatest impact from the development here. And I'm a little upset that I was told by Somerset and by Toll Brothers, there's no maps, there's no plans, there's nothing for the future here. So I've been dealing with the cul-de-sac and dealing with who's going to pave it? What are we doing with water? How are we going to get those water from the mountain around my house? It's been a three-year project and I just pulled my building permit last week. So you can understand my frustration. My wife and I have gone through this for three years and nobody had an answer on what was going on here. So I had to, I had these deed restrictions that I dealt with forever. Finally got a house that's super expensive to build, a lot of concrete. And now a big builder, and I'm a builder myself, don't get me wrong, builder in California. So I appreciate growth and economics and what comes with it. But to be told that I can't do something and somebody 20 feet away from me can do something that's going to look into my backyard, is going to be able to see what I, what I can do and not have the privacy in the lot and the cul-de-sac. I have four small kids. It's really upsetting. None of this was told to me and I have emails to prove they're saying, nothing in the future is planned here, right? As a matter of fact, with the grading, the way it works, my driveway won't even work at this point. Three years in the, three years in the making and now my driveway won't work. So someone needs to reach out to me and tell me what we're going to do about this situation. Cause I, supposedly I was going to pave the cul-de-sac and now my driveway won't even work to access my property. It's inaccessible at this point. And so I, I think it's a real issue. Again, I was told that the restrictions for the gate was only for emergency access. And so if I paved it on my own dime, of course, I'm buying a lot and I'm paving a public street for everybody else. I told that it would only be emergency access for fire and everything else, which again, with four children, I appreciate the emergency services for everybody. I had no issue with it. But now I'm being told that that's going away and my driveway goes away as well. So we, you know, this is pretty frustrating. We need some answers. Everybody on River Hill has been told one thing and now something else is being thrown in our face and it's kind of upsetting. So that's really all I have, but I really need to address the, the topo thing. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make a comment tonight? Sorry, I'm sure your three minutes are up. Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the commission, hopefully answer some of these questions as well as some of our own. So I'll turn it over. Who would like to get us started? Commissioner Wysski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, since you stood up first, let's talk about this cul-de-sac. Are you aware there's a building permit that's just been issued for the property off of this site? And part of that building permit included building a cul-de-sac versus a through road?
No, not aware. However, there is nothing in the handbook that requires this to be emergency access only. So I, I'm not sure where the, why the marketing materials are marketed that specific way or what's going on. The handbook itself does not create, have any text whatsoever that says this has to be an emergency access vehicle gain. The applicant is complying with whatever the handbook mentions. So I, I'm not sure why the, why that was required as part of, as part of the building permit. It's definitely something I can look into.
Okay. In that case, if it's, if it's being represented by Somerset themselves and/or another developer and, and that's the representation they're using for selling their lots or their homes in this other subdivision, that's not an issue with this project. It could, could be a civil issue with the person selling the lot or representing the lot, correct?
That's correct. If there's no standards in the handbook, we go by what the laws that are adopted by the city council are. We, we can't go off of what somebody was promised or what marketing materials are saying. That puts the city at a liability. So what we go by is what our council adopted as the, the guiding standards for this area, which is the Somerset PUD handbook.
Okay. So with that being said, if we have a cul-de-sac that is going to be built at the end of this road that's going to connect this secondary entrance as Mr. Rayly described to us, how do we determine if the elevations work? I mean, the last gentleman that just got up and spoke said that there appears to be a change in elevations in, in what he is proposing to build and permitted to build right now versus a roadway that is, is going to be tied into. Do you?
Sure. And, and this is something that I can, I can defer over to, to Gabe.
That's fine. If you prefer to defer that, that's fine.
He would definitely be able to better analyze how the grading would come out on the project site surrounding.
Okay.
Good evening. Gabe Whitler, Odyssey Engineering. If we could possibly zoom in a bit in this, this area we're discussing. Yeah, so this is, what you see depicted here is, is from a topographic survey, which shows existing conditions today. You see the end of River Hill Way and, and what you see is a temporary cul-de-sac, which was, is a typical requirement if you, if you're building a street and it's going to be phased and extended in, at a later date. You build a temporary cul-de-sac, you put egg base down with the intention that that road gets, either the cul-de-sac gets paved or the road gets extended with another phase. I am not aware, this is the first I've heard of, of this gentleman or this, this lot being required to pave that cul-de-sac. Currently, the, the way that, that this parcel is accessed at the end of River Hill Way is via an access easement. 27-foot access easement along the project frontage. So from what I've seen through title search and, and record mapping, there isn't even adequate easements there for, for the adjacent lot to develop a full cul-de-sac on, on this property. There's a 27-foot frontage. So, so the intent here with the grading is to match the existing road grade. We're actually sloping down to a low point roughly here and then the grade breaks and comes back up gently. These grades are all really relatively flat for the Somerset area, so they kind of follow the contour of the natural ground. I think there is some slope grading along the roadway extension is what happens is there's a, a flat cul-de-sac graded there. As soon as you leave that flat cul-de-sac, you're into the side of a hill. So any kind of roadway you do is going to have some cut and have some fill is what you see depicted there. It would be very simple to be, to grade this roadway in coordination with the adjacent lot. That's something that could be handled easily. Again, this is the first I've heard of a permit or a development of that cul-de-sac in the roadway. So that's why you don't see any connection or that showing on this, this current plan.
So, and I, I'm not sure whether or not this is exactly what happened in this case. But since currently this is the end of the subdivision, the way that it exists now, and there is no final map approved, no subdivision improvements approved for this new subdivision, what likely would have happened is that this is an existing temporary cul-de-sac. It's made for temporary emergency vehicles to turn around because once a fire pulls onto the site, they have no way to get anywhere else. They have to turn around and get there. As this lot develops, they're responsible for making the improvements adjacent to their site, in which case would be installing the street, installing the cul-de-sac. So that's more than likely what happened. If they coordinate with the adjacent, now that this, this could potentially punch through, if they coordinate with the adjacent developer, there may not be a requirement for a cul-de-sac there any longer. It may just function as a regular street at that case. So that, that's more than likely what happened in that case. It's definitely something we can look into though, if, if you want staff to.
Jeff, a follow-up to that, and maybe this is a question for Janelle, I'm not sure. In the Phase 1 of Somerset, or 1A I should say, this was originally going to be townhomes with plus or minus 90 homes available as originally approved. Do we know in the handbook what the roadway was projected or does the handbook not get that specific?
The handbook does get that specific. I believe, I don't remember off the top of my head. I think it's somewhere in the staff report analyzed that, I believe it's 24 feet and then they have pockets here and there. But I can, I can look that up for you.
Did it have two access points or one access point with a fire access? Did it get to that level of detail?
No, it did not get to that level of detail.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Additional questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This would be from Mike Rayly. Several questions that were brought up. Lady from the audience indicated she want to know the, was it the reclaimed land and the instability of the, the side of the hillside there?
We are required by code to revegetate and stabilize all the slopes per City of Reno standards. So the idea is that, you know, we were putting provisions in place that would prevent, obviously prevent that from happening. And actually, if you look at what's been done kind of all throughout Somerset, this is, this, there's been cases that were, you know, much more extensive than what we're proposing here that function, function basically the same way.
About the height of the homes?
The, the homes, and if I can get my PowerPoint put back up. They, the up, basically the uphill side of the street are single-story homes. And then the downhill lots are walkout basements. So from the street, they'll appear to be one story and then two story on the backside. And I can show you one, I'll, I'll. So, so these homes would be walkout basements. These homes would be single-story.
Okay, I have one last one on school capacity. You know, we've been talking about WC1. We've been going over that and everybody says everything's cool. Well, it's not cool. The WC1 was for maintenance and building new buildings. I haven't seen a budget yet or heard of one on the hiring of new teachers for all these new schools. Cause right now I understand they're still in a deficit. So I'm kind of curious on our numbers here. Not so much as the middle school, but we have Westegard that's over capacity and we're going to have McQueen's still over capacity. And like I say, it's not about the buildings now. It's about the money that's going to be able to hire the schoolteachers to go in those. in those new buildings because WC1 won't handle that. That's my problem with this.
I, I can tell you that I can't answer that directly, especially as it relates to the hiring of teachers. I know enough about WC1 and some of the improvements that are being made to be dangerous, to be quite frankly. I mean, I know a lot more about, we're actually, our office is working on a middle school out in Sparks. So I know with some of the new schools that they're building, there's going to be some redistricting and that sort of thing. I think it's important to point out that with the reduction in density, obviously we're going to have a lower student generation rate from what was originally approved in the handbook.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, additional questions? Mr. Gower.
Mr. Chairman, I may bring this up in future agenda items, but I'll just mention it now, just following up on Commissioner Hawkins' point. I, I do appreciate his comment on the school capacity. I think for a 62-unit development, it's, for me, wasn't as big of an issue on this one, but we do have a finding that relates to school capacity. And I would be curious to get staff's input on future items related to that topic. And Jeff, I don't know if you have feedback now on meeting that finding or if you'd like to defer. I'm fine with deferring.
At, at this current point, the, the capacity is fine on the, on the school site. They start getting worried once it hits 120% and we're currently under that with the proposed project. What's important to note is, I'll echo what Mike said. They're, they're currently going through and developing schools all around the region. And that's what WC1 did. And so this is not like an isolated thing. By doing so, they will staff those schools and those schools will have additional space to move students into. And by moving students into those schools, they'll be moving out of other schools. So it's one big ecosystem of schools. And so by, by implementing one school maybe in Sparks or down in Damone Ranch may actually relieve pressure in other schools in other areas because they go through redistrict, rezone. And so that's, that's sort of how the whole ecosystem's balancing out right now. So it may be, for example, McQueen's at 117% right now. It may be that, that will actually go down as they go through and build these, these new schools out or do expansions. For example, the Damone Ranch expansion that just occurred. So that's, that's about the school. I, I know one, I, I wanted to address the, the street width as well. It's 24 and the handbook is the minimum, which is less than a typical street width that's required. We did look at street widths here. We know that parking is important. Rather than, we, we looked at the benefits of doing pocket parking around the site versus actually doing on-street parking directly in front of a residence and how that would impact grading. And by doing part, pocket parking around the site, it'd actually trigger more grading because of how you have to orient 90-degree spaces, turnarounds, things like that. It would actually cause us a greater impact to grading on the site in terms of cuts and fills than just widening the street slightly and allowing you to parallel park in the front of your house. So that's something that we looked at to, to increase the street to 32 and 37 feet wide instead of 24 feet wide. So I think that answers that question as well. Thank you.
Mike, I have a question. Couple of comments from the homeowners that are to the, get my bearings right, I guess that's the west.
Yeah.
Can you give me an idea of how far away we, the houses are from what's down on the west side?
So this is, this is a photo simulation here. I, I assume, and I'm not familiar with their exact street, but they mentioned Village Center. So I assume they're down here. You can see kind of looking up the, the distance and... Gabe, do you have an exact? You don't have an exact distance, do you? But it's, it's a significant, obviously topographically and horizontally, significant distance. Let's see if we can get you an exact, precise number here.
And that's fine. Well, Gabe's doing, doing his, his extreme close-up there.
Got my scale?
Yeah. If I understood you from the initial presentation as well, those would be from the backside, or excuse me, from the, the existing homes. That would be a two-story elevation.
That is correct.
Being the walkout basement.
Right. You'd be looking at the backside of the home, the, the downward slope of the, of the site. So the, the two-story elevation, correct.
Okay. And that is roughly, once Gabe figures it out, a distance and a height away from those existing homes.
So. It's about 400 feet separation horizontally and probably 30 feet.
Okay.
130 feet, excuse me, vertically.
Okay. And then that's, just to be clear from the requirements, is that where we're looking at some additional tree planting?
That, that's correct. Yeah. We have, we have, do have additional plantings all along there to help screen. If I can go back to the PowerPoint, you'll see that screening in the, the photo simulations.
Okay. No, I, I saw, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. As you can see, we've, we've got those, kind of that increased landscape, landscaping along that downward slope and you can, you can kind of see it here too. And that doesn't account for, you know, the trees that people plant in their backyards and that sort of thing as well.
And then one quick question for Jeff. There's a lot of the, you know, the discussion in terms of making sure that we're in compliance with the handbook and a lot of the, you know, images about the cut slope and everything else. Is the handbook what is dictating how these cuts and fills are going to be done with undulation or am I missing the specific condition that talks to that? Is it? How is that being addressed? Just, you know, especially with the, you know, the special use permit for the hillside development that we're looking at here. Are we addressing that through conditions or is it some of it just related to the requirements in the ten, in the PUD?
There's mainly one condition in here and that's condition number 18. And if you look at that, it kind of says you got to meet some, you got to meet the design standards. Now, we're at the preliminary phase in a tentative map. We're not going through the excruciating detail of checking every single contour line, making sure everything's feathered, making sure all the boulders are on the right spots and the landscaping plan is final. That's what we do at the, the final map stage and that's what the handbook actually has. There are, goodness, at, at least nine pages. Oh, 16, sorry. I, I said 18 for the condition, 16. There, there's at least eight or nine pages in the handbook of, of standards for grading. It's probably one of the most detailed grading standards that we have in any PUD handbook that we have currently adopted within the City of Reno.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion? Mr. Weiskie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to start a discussion about postponing a decision on this, making on this project this evening so that we can understand how the roadways are going to tie together to make sure that the elevations work. Right now, even our staff is saying that they would need to look into that and would like a little bit of time to research it to understand how the roadways will best work, especially since adjoining property is getting ready to be built and a permit has been issued on it. Whether we make it date certain or not, we have, as a planning commission, the ability to make a decision within 30 days of hearing the project. And so if staff needs some more time, they, and they're not, would not be able to present to us the answers regarding roadways next, at next Thursday's meeting, then maybe we re-agendize this as a continuing item to our first meeting in August. And I would like to start that conversation with that.
Thank you. I guess I'll listen to Jeff as the staff responds to that first.
Yeah. Even if you wanted to maybe postpone it to later in the agenda, we may be able to actually go upstairs and look at the approved permit if it's already been scanned in, download it, double-check it with the applicant, see how it compares, and then come back down later during the meeting.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion to continue, continue this item until later in the, in our meeting and just postpone making any decisions right now. If there's support for it.
How does the commission feel about the suggestion from staff and Commissioner Weiskie?
I'm on board.
Commissioner Griffith, I'm in agreement.
We need a formal motion on this, Sienna. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins, second.
I have a motion of second to postpone this until staff has an answer. So we will move on.
To continue it.
Continue, excuse me.
Please not postpone it.
The terminology is, legal's already breathing down my neck. So, okay, I have a motion of second to continue this until a little later in the meeting today. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. We will continue this till later in tonight's meeting and move on to our next agenda item, giving staff some time to hopefully clarify some of the issues that came up on that item. So moving on to item 7.2, which is case number LDC 18-00091, Tanamera RPC Business Park. Okay. And before we get into that, I have Commissioner Griffith.
Commissioner Griffith, I will be recusing myself from this item as Tanamera is an ongoing client of Reno Engineering.
Thank you. We'll see you back here shortly. Or not shortly, we'll see. Okay. Start with a presentation from the applicant.
Chris Baker with Manheart Consulting here on behalf of Tanamera Development. I'm going to try not to hold the button down too much like Mike did. What's before you is a request for a zone change from industrial commercial to, to general office. The project's located off of Reno Corporate Drive. It's east of Longley Lane and Double R Boulevard. It's identified there with the star. Like I said, the request before you, zoning map amendment from industrial commercial, IC to general office, GO, for an approximately eight and a half acre parcel. On the left, you see the current zoning designations. As you see, there's a, a pretty good mix of both IC and general office now. On the right is the proposed change. And as you see, the, the, the site going from essentially the gray to the blue. General office is, the designation's compatible with the, that's actually supposed to say mixed employment master plan designation, not mixed use. I apologize for the typo. The GO zoning designation will allow for a wider variety of uses that promote more compatible, that are more compatible with the existing and proposed uses in the area and will enhance the marketability of the site. The short of it is, the RPC center has, over time, really shifted from more industrial uses. Signature landscape and other things are kind of located on the north end. Now it's mostly focused on general office and medical uses. And that's where the goal is to market this parcel. And those medical uses actually are not allowed in the industrial commercial site or zoning designation. Typically, the general office designations are less intense. Obviously, they omit those industrial type uses, but from a traffic and, and services, they're a little bit less intense than, than some of those industrial uses. Right now, there's no proposed development for the project site, but if approved, obviously any development would be in accordance with Reno Municipal Code for General Office. With that, I'm available for any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. We'll let you know. Move on to presentation from staff. Janelle.
Good evening. Chair Johnson. Janelle Thomas, Senior Civil Engineer for the Record. Since Sienna has joined you at the, at the DIAS, I get to present to you. So Chris did an excellent job of giving an overview of the project. Just wanted to add a couple of other items regarding traffic. While we didn't receive a traffic analysis for this particular application, with future development applications, we would be requiring some form of analysis for whatever was proposed in the appropriate, at the appropriate time and at the appropriate level. Also, the subject site is located in the Airport Noise Exposure General Overlay District that requires certain uses to provide noise attenuation. Any future project on this site would need to meet the code requirements that limit noise exposure impacts and require building plans for new structures greater than 45 feet to be submitted for review by the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority. Additionally, this proposal was reviewed by Ward 2 Neighborhood Advisory Board in June. Comments were received following the release of the staff report and most comments acknowledged the general office zone as compatible with the area. And a couple of comments noted potential traffic control concerns if a hospital is ultimately constructed to the west of the site. There is actually an application in our office currently being analyzed for a potential hospital site at the, what, southeast corner of Longley and, is that Double R? Yeah, Double R. So one call was received seeking clarification about the, the exact site location. As I'm sure, sure that many of you are familiar, the addressing in this area is quite complicated. So it's not uncommon to get those types of questions. Staff is recommending approval of the requested zoning map amendment and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Janelle. Before I open this up for public comment, I'll bring it to the commission for disclosure, starting with Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I have visited the site.
Commissioner Johnson, my office is across the street from the site. Commissioner Gower visited the site.
Commissioner Hawkins visited the site.
Commissioner Weiskie, as did I.
Hey, I do not have any request to speak for my items. Michelle, do we have anybody filling one out on this?
No, I do not.
Anyone in the audience wishing to make a comment on this item? Hey, seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission for questions. Comments, discussion, motion, any of the above.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Weiskie.
Thank you. Janelle, and this may be deferred to Sienna anyways, when we did reimagine Reno, we were told specifically that we had a lack of industrial land available and we needed more of it. Why do we now all of a sudden not need it? And we have a staff recommendation to change the zoning from industrial when this is definitely an industrial area, including industrial, general office. I mean, it's, it's all in this area. We're near the airport. Why are we now changing our mind?
I'm going to defer to Sienna.
Thank you for the record, Sienna Reed, Senior Planner. Certainly for the master plan, this particular area is still identified, you know, for employment type of uses. It has the mixed employment, master plan land use that really contemplated for a, a bit more of a mix than say our industrial master plan designation. And that's why you have a, a range of conforming zoning districts that are a bit broader than our industrial designation. So there was an acknowledgement going through the master plan process that employment areas have variability. We do need to protect our industrial areas that have kind of larger areas that are more consistently industrial to allow for some of the larger industrial uses, heavier industrial uses that may have greater impacts on surrounding areas. At the same time, it was also acknowledged with the adoption of the new land use designations that there are some areas that have a little bit more of a mixed complexion. This, this happens to be one of them. And that's why it is more appropriate for that mixed employment master plan designation. Certainly, there are lighter types of industrial uses that could establish in this area and also a need to have offices, kind of corporate campuses, things that you might kind of more associate with other type of areas like South Meadows, kind of 1, 2, and 3 all have those types of areas. So we don't necessarily see that this detracts from overall employment lands. And what we do see in this particular area is that it's very representative, representative of what you would find in a mixed employment master plan designation where you do have industrial commercial zones, where you do have general office zones, so that you do get that more mixed pattern of, of types of uses. So we don't necessarily see it as a reduction in industrial land that would allow for those heavier users, those kind of other industrial uses that might have greater impacts in terms of noise, odor, things like that.
So if it's, I'm just trying to understand. So, if it's... I'm just trying to understand this because we spent a lot of time on it. Matter of fact, in Cold Springs, we worked with the developer there to add more industrial land than what he was originally proposing in his PUD to increase the area of industrial land because we needed more. And so, the difference is gonna be in the future then. If it's an employment district, then it really doesn't have to be industrial. That's what you're saying? Which, to me, is different than what we heard over the last two years.
Well, and if you remember back through the Reimagine Reno process, we definitely identified a need for industrial land, and we made some really specific changes around areas where it had an ability to generally fit within the overall area and not have adverse impacts to surrounding areas. And that's why we made some pretty significant changes away from mixed use to industrial along North Virginia.
There's no residential near it. I mean, there's no residential adjacency to this.
You're right, we don't have residential adjacency. What we do have are a lot of existing uses that are office uses. It's not necessarily an area where a outdoor manufacturing facility would fit in very well, where you would have, you know, outdoor storage as a primary use fitting in very well. And so, I think it's really this distinction between what are areas that are consistently industrial in nature and appropriate for I... In terms of zoning, I, IB, and IC. So, very focused. Certainly, you can have other types of supporting uses in those zones, but then where are some of our other areas in the city that still support employment? And you might have some lighter types of industrial uses there that can be a bit more compatible with other types of office uses like this particular area. So, I think we did certainly document a need for industrial land, but we didn't document a need for industrial land in all places. And that's why we made some really specific changes along North Virginia because that was an area that had previously been industrial. We were experiencing a lot of conflicts with industrial and residential through the mixed use. And we said, okay, we have an opportunity to establish this area as a solid industrial area where people can expect to see large trucks, where you can have, you know, outdoor storage uses established on their own. And so, I think it would help to start thinking about employment areas as having somewhat different characters and really trying to preserve the industrial areas that are identified in our structure plan as industrial logistics area and then... Excuse me, industrial logistics areas and then supported by the industrial master plan land use designation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Versus this, which is an outer neighborhood.
Additional questions? Comments, discussion? Mr. Gower.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready for one.
There's no further questions or discussion.
Okay. In the case of LDC 18-00091, Tanamera RPC Business Park, I move to recommend to the City Council approval of the zoning map amendment by ordinance because it conforms to the master plan based on Sienna's explanation and is designed to meet all applicable statutory and code requirements, and I can meet the findings to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gower. Motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, all second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries four to one with Commissioner Wysocki in opposition. Okay. Moving on to our next item. 7.3, case number LDC 18-00092, Pachetti Ranch. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant.
How do I get my slideshow? Good evening. I'm with the Commission for the Record, John Munson, Principal of Venture Engineering. I'm here representing the project. What we have tonight is another zoning map amendment. Okay. Grab the wafer. So, the request for rezoning of 1.2 acre site currently zoned LLR 2.5 to professional office.
John, can you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
Sure, sorry. So, the location of the project is off of Gateway Drive, and you get there from South Meadows Parkway, get on Gateway, travel quite a ways, come over here, and the site is located right here. The access is through the adjacent parcels, which are under the same ownership, these two parcels here. Dirt road, it's a vacant lot. It's part of their homestead right now, and it just happens to be zoned differently than the other two parcels. There's an aerial view closer up, and you can see the other two parcels and this subject site right here. The existing Reimagine Reno master plan, it is actually master planned suburban mixed use along with the cluster of parcels adjacent to it. We have over here, this was the mixed employment, which is...
John, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm missing both the Commissioner and legal counsel. Can I get you to pause for just a second while we get everybody?
Oh, no worries.
Back in the room? All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Proceed, okay.
Yep.
So, the master plan, suburban mixed use. It is, right now, a non-conforming parcel in terms of zoning. The large lot residential was a zoning that came in from the county when it was annexed in 1993. That zoning is, you know, appropriate for the fringes, I guess, where you have, you know, you're trying to transition from higher density to low density and then to rural areas, which in this case is not the case anymore. I think it just ended up that way as it never got rezoned. So, here's the current zoning. The adjacent parcels under the same ownership, Zone PO. This is Zone LLR 2.5. This is the South Meadows PUD. This is multifamily. This is the Huff Acre Park, which is half zoned MF and half zoned LLR 2.5. According to the master plan, I'm just gonna go back. The park will someday be open space. It's master planned open space. It will eventually be rezoned open space. As would the subject parcel eventually would have to be zoned something other than LLR 2.5 to bring it into conformance with the master plan. Well, that's a housekeeping task, you know, for the city, but we're taking care of that right tonight, hopefully. This would be the proposed zoning map, so it would be the same color as the adjoining property. This is... This is a mini storage right here. These are apartments, again, the Huff Acre Park. All office, commercial. This is a childcare center. Office center here, vacant land. And that's the end of the slideshow. So, basically, just housekeeping to bring this into conformance with the master plan and in conformance with the adjacent parcels under the same ownership. So, if development did occur, it could be done under the same rules and not have this parcel out here that really couldn't be used. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Turn it over once again to Janelle.
Good evening again. Janelle Thomas, Senior Civil Engineer for the record. John did a great job of overview for the project. And again, I'm gonna bring up just some traffic housekeeping issues. There wasn't a traffic analysis with this application, as is normal with the zoning map amendment, but it does appear that with future development, we would require some form of traffic analysis depending on the breadth of the development that is anticipated. Let's see, so the sites in close proximity to commercial services, employment opportunities, public transportation, and schools in future development would be considered infill development. There are utilities and infrastructure in place in order to serve this property. The subject site, again, is located in that Airport Noise Exposure General Overlay District, which could require those noise attenuation improvements with any future development. The proposal was reviewed by the Ward Two Neighborhood Advisory Board in June. Comments were received following the release of the staff report, and comments acknowledged the request that the PO zone is compatible with the area and adopted master plan use. No calls were received regarding the request, and staff is recommending approval of the zoning map amendment. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Janelle. I will bring it back to the Commission for Disclosures, starting with Commissioner Wysocki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have ridden by the site.
Commissioner Hawkins drove by the site.
Commissioner Gower, as did I.
Commissioner Johnson, as did I.
Commissioner Olivas, as did I.
Thank you. Okay, it's public hearing. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak for us on this item?
No, we do not.
Is anyone in the audience wish to make a public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back once again to the Commission for Questions, Discussion. Mr. Gower.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Question related to... I know we're talking about a zoning map amendment here, but it's indicated in the staff report that the intention is to build townhomes here. And Sienna, you indicated in your staff report under item C that the height, the allowable height for PO is a reduction of 10 feet. So, if we're looking to support housing opportunities, as you indicate in item G, then why would a change in zoning to decrease the height of the buildings support that finding?
I could, Mr. Chair, for the record, Sienna Reed, Senior Planner. So, I think in terms of supporting overall housing, I mean, the zone change is really allowing for a much greater number of potential units to establish if that is the ultimate use that is pursued. Certainly, the PO zone does allow for attached single-family and condos, townhomes. That's what the applicant has expressed. But with the existing LLR 2.5 zone, even though you could go to a greater height, you certainly couldn't get the same number of units that you could under the PO zone. So, I think from an overall support of housing perspective and consistency with the suburban mixed use master plan land use, if townhomes were to establish, they would generally be supportive of that low-to-moderate density housing that that particular land use allows for. That land use does seek to have higher densities, closer to major intersections. This isn't necessarily an area that has those characteristics. So, staff generally feels if a townhouse were to establish, and that's something that you would certainly see through another type of process in the future, that that would be supportive of the overall housing needs in the area.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Commissioner Hawkins.
Mr. Chair, applicant, please. Talk to me and the rest of the commissioners about the drainage there. When we drove... When I drove over there, it looked like an old... Part of its old pasture. But how's the drainage there, and how does it evacuate itself from that property?
Currently, there's an irrigation ditch on the property. It was fed from the lake ditch, and we've investigated that, and there's a couple of pipes across the street. One points this way, takes the water through the ranch, if you will, and eventually is piped through the adjacent commercial development. It used to continue, but they've piped it. And then another pipe takes it into what is currently being used as a pasture right now. According to the lake ditch, there are no water rights for irrigation, so it's actually not supposed to be being irrigated. But I guess it's a good thing that it is, so it's not a fire hazard. But it's... Right now, we have determined that we probably have a storm drainage. We have to perpetuate that, not the ditch, but a storm drain pipe because the ditch originates across the freeway. So, we would just pipe it to the commercial area where it currently goes.
And also the egress, as well as the entrance to the property. Look awful skinny to me when I went over there.
Is my slideshow... Can I have my slideshow back, by chance? Thank you. Right now, if this were developed by itself, it would have to have... You know, it has prescriptive easement, I guess, for access. There's no access easement to get to this parcel, but these parcels have access right here. And then there would be potentially a secondary access right here. So, it's substantially wide right here. Just right now, it's just a dirt road. It's just serving a couple of single-family residences right now. One residence, and I guess at one time there was more than one. Currently, there's just one being occupied. And it is, we do have a fairly wide street on Gateway with a dual-left turn lane right here, and the turn lane tapers to nothing right in front of the property, so any development would have to widen that. Not widen the street, but just widen the striping to make it continuous dual-left. So, traffic is in a pretty good situation because we have the mini storage here, which is not a high-traffic generator. And then the apartments, their access is way up here.
I take it if you get the zone change, you'd be using all three parcels to do what you wanted to complete, correct?
That's correct. And, you know, it's ideal to have it zoned the same. We probably wouldn't be able to process an application with different zoning, and therefore, you know, this parcel just hangs out there as LLR 2.5. Eventually, the city, like I say, would probably have to bring it into conformance as something, but it's not gonna be part of the PUD because those limits are established. Wouldn't be multifamily, so we think PO is the right zone.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Discussion? Motion? Mr. Wysocki.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. In the case of LDC 18-00092, Pachetti Ranch, I move to recommend City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance because it conforms to the master plan and is designed to meet all applicable statutory and code requirements.
Thank you. Motion of second?
Commissioner Hawkins, second.
I have a motion of second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we are going to take a brief recess now. The item that was previously continued is nearing completion. We want to give them a few minutes to get that done, so I will say about 10 minutes. Does that sound good? Maybe 15? Okay, 15. So, we will be back here at 7:40. Thank you. Thank you. Michelle, we good? Not quite?
Did you call the break until 7:40?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got to wait for another.
We have to wait, huh?
Able to bring it back to order. I am going to reopen item 7.1 and ask staff to give us an update.
Thank you, Chair. Jeff Borkart, associate planner, for the record. So we did go through, there is an approved permit on the adjacent site that the neighbor mentioned. And so I would like to turn it over to Janelle. She has some comments on there. We did try to go through, we usually scan documents in once they're approved, but there's a little bit of a lag time. The permit was approved 10 days ago, so it's, there is a bit of a lag time for those things getting scanned in. We weren't able to download those plans, and the neighbor did have to get out of town. So we did, I do want to turn it over to Janelle. She has some comments on this and on how we deal with situations like this typically.
Janelle Thomas, senior civil engineer, for the record. So what I was going to share with the Commission is that in these particular cases, when we have a tentative map application come before us, and we do analyze it according to the best information that's available at the time. So the preliminary grading plan that you see before you this evening is based upon that preliminary information that was available. Obviously, as development does occur adjacent to a proposed property, there may be modifications, minor modifications, which need to be dealt with at a proposed final map stage. So with the final map, we obviously will be looking at finished grade elevations, and those will be tied into any development which occurs between the time in which a tentative map would occur and a final map presentation would be made. So I just wanted to share with the Commission that oftentimes we do see some changes in existing elevations adjacent to properties and permits that are issued prior to the development of property which is adjacent to it would have to be taken into consideration. I would also like to note that it sounded like this particular individual who did have to leave had some requirements for the construction of his property, which I can't verify, because I don't see the plans scanned in yet. And he was unable to share those plans with us this evening. But it may end up that this particular individual may end up with less construction necessary as a result. It sounded like he was being required to construct the roundabout. I'm not certain whether that was a paved portion of the roundabout, or if that was, again, the extension of a temporary turnaround for emergency access. So depending on what the extent of his final improvement plans look like, that very well may be in his benefit that he may not have to build that turnaround portion due to the extension of the road for this particular tentative map, depending on the timing and the coordination that occurs in the future. But I'd be happy to answer any questions about the process as it occurs, or if you have any questions about the particular permit.
Thank you, Janelle. So I'll bring it back to the Commission. We basically had heard presentation, asked several questions, and were a little bit concerned about this item. So I think we've got some answers to that. So I guess what I would say is if we have additional questions on this item, ask those. If not, we had reached the discussion stage, so we'll see what additional comments it would be. I will throw this back to Commissioner Wysocki to start with, since he was the one that brought us to the continuance in the first place, and I'd like to have him have first crack at additional comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. If I may, I would like to just start with discussion, and then if any questioning comes up, either me or anybody else, they could address their questions. Because of the responses from staff coming back right now from doing their research, and I am very appreciative of that, it sounds to me, we're looking at two items here tonight, which we're being asked to make a motion and vote on. And one is a tentative map. And a tentative map is exactly that. It's the base, the first step of the proposed land development. It is not the final map, where elevations and grading and drainage and setbacks and all those things are checked and verified. So understanding what staff has just explained for the roadway connection, in that elevations will be determined upon final map, tie-ins to adjacent properties will be determined at final map, and since there is a permit that has been issued for an adjoining property, that those will establish the roadway elevations and curb elevations and sidewalk elevations and drainage. And so this new development that we're talking about tonight on a tentative map will have to be designed to match what is existing, not the other way around. So the... So the permit that was just issued is a precedence or priority of construction has started in my understanding of it. And then the second thing that we're looking at is cuts and fills of 20 feet or more. And I understand what those are and where they are. And I can agree with the application that's before us tonight. So with the additional time that we have provided staff tonight and the answers that have been brought back, I will be voting in favor of a motion as recommended by staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wysocki. Additional discussion? Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For me, my biggest concern is that we're not creating an undue hardship for the adjacent property owner. So there's a little bit of a phasing question for me in the sense of his application is approved. If this tentative map is approved, which one, I mean, how do those talk to each other? For the reasons that Commissioner Wysocki mentioned regarding the tentative map versus a final map, how can he plan for, in his development, this tentative map process?
So Janelle Thomas, again, for the record. The prioritization of the timing of the permit. Obviously, the adjacent property owner has pulled their permit. They have time certain to construct their improvements. And then knowing that those elevations have been established with that permit, I would suggest that obviously there's gonna be some coordination between the engineer who's performing the design for the final map of this subdivision tentative map. It's all gonna depend on when the projects move forward. But I would presume that there's gonna be priority to the property owner who has pulled his permit and that the requirement would be to tie into that elevation that has been approved because they did pull their permit. If the subdivision comes forward and the particular individual has not constructed their improvements, the final map improvements would not be accepted until a permanent tie is made. So if the subdivision comes forward and there's a certain distance of roadway that hasn't been constructed by the private property owner, it may be on the responsibility of the final map owner to construct those improvements if they aren't in, just for that connectivity component.
I appreciate that. Thank you. That makes sense. I think my concern is, and what I don't want to see happen, is that the property owner is required to improve that roundabout or that roadway to a standard because he has priority with the assumption that, you know, this development may or may not move forward. So I mean, that's kind of what I was getting at with the undue hardship. And that's my concern. And I guess I'm looking for some sort of assurance that that's not gonna happen. Because I think the last thing that we want to see is this property owner come in, be required to develop this roundabout only to have it torn out and turned into a throughway.
Yeah, so in my experience, the temporary turnarounds are exactly as they're stated. They are temporary with the anticipation of that phased development moving forward in the future. If, I don't have it pulled up on my phone right now, but I was looking at the final map that was originally recorded for this particular subdivision. It has since gone through a record of survey where some boundary lines were adjusted and the access was modified slightly. But as you will see in many developments that pursue themselves in a phased fashion, there is that requirement for a temporary turnaround. Typically, it is not paved unless required by the emergency services agencies such as fire department if they require a paved surface. But generally, I've seen that an all-weather surface has been acceptable in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Additional comments? Questions? Commissioner Wysocki?
Mr. Chairman, if you're ready for a motion.
In a moment. I was formulating my thoughts as well. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't stepping on anybody's toes. I can appreciate the discussion here. I guess I want to take a half step backwards just from the project as a whole. I mean, I think there's some, there were some issues here that maybe go a little bit beyond the single homeowner who's got some timing issues. And while I certainly would hate, as Commissioner Gower says, to see a lot of money and time spent on something that's going to be torn out, there's no, there's nothing here that says if this tentative map is approved that they're going to be submitting final map right away. I mean, it could be a two- or three-year gap in between where the first project is done and then something comes through afterwards. And certainly at that time, the final map will have to respond to it. So I think I'm a little less concerned about that than maybe some of the questions that came up originally from some of the other comments in terms of the second point of access and some other issues there. And I just want to say that there was almost some competing concerns. I think having two points of access to this is a good thing. But one of the things that I was a little concerned about in those two points of access is that it does seem like we have two different types of development happening here. We have an existing large lot, custom home that is now going to be sort of the front door for a different type of development. And so I was just trying to look at, in terms of the, you know, special use permit findings, in terms of the density and layouts and setbacks that we were looking at here, I think that was one of my concerns with respect to, yes, this meets the intent of the PUD. But I was trying to incorporate that with the findings. And I do feel, and that was sort of the questions for the, what's the type of housing unit that we're looking at here, single-story, two-story? What are our setbacks? What are the distances that we have from the neighbors? Because those all fit into the category. Having said that, I do feel that although I think there is going to be a little bit of a change, one of the things that staff brought up was the relocation of some of the houses from the one side to the other away from this larger lot area. And I think that created some separation, both in plan and in elevation, that addresses some of the concerns that I have. I do also appreciate the initial questions about that road being marketed or shown as a cul-de-sac. With the tentative map, it's different than that. I think, I appreciate staff pointing out that that was never a condition of the PUD. That was never anything that would have been an expectation. But with that, I just wanted to point out that I wanted to acknowledge that these are two different housing types that we have here. And I'm only able to make those special use permit findings because of the changes that were made and the shift in the height and the location of what we're seeing there. I just didn't feel like that had been given quite the level of comment that I thought maybe, you know, our feedback had come in. So I appreciate you letting me talk on that. I know you were ready to make a motion. So unless there's additional comments, I will entertain that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And before I make the motion, I'd like to make one comment that has not been brought up. To those homeowners to the east of this cul-de-sac that we've been discussing, you know, I'm sorry about the representation that has been made to you, but that is not part of our findings. That representation, and I am not preaching any legal advice or service. That is not my job, but it is, as it has been explained to me before, that may be a civil issue that is your desire to, or you can entertain that idea with legal counsel if you feel you have been misdeeded in any way. But staff has presented to us that the planned development has always had an access through it. So we go by what staff brings forward and what is in their, in the handbook. And with that, and my previous comments, in the case of LDC 18-00081 Somerset 1A, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map and special use permit subject to the conditions. And I can make all of the conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Wysocki. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Gower, all second. And to add on to what Commissioner Wysocki said in making my findings, it comes down to what Jeff started his presentation with is that fundamentally, the tentative map as proposed is consistent with the approved handbook, including access and the location of the development. So, you know, that's the ultimate representation of what the build-out of the property should be. So with that, I can make all the findings as well.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. And I will just put out for both staff and the applicant, if we can follow up once the plans are scanned in so we have a clearer sense of what's going on and perhaps reach out to the existing homeowner to continue the discussion that was started here tonight. So, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number eight on our agenda, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Who wants to field this one? Yes.
Next meeting's on the 18th of July at the Sparks Chamber of Commerce, or the Sparks Chamber, their city council chamber. That's all I have from that.
Okay, thank you. Item nine, staff announcements. Sienna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm gonna take city council items first. They have been on break, so they have not been taking any actions on those previously heard by the planning commission, so no report there. Did want to give you a quick update on some of our planning division projects in relation to some items that have been requested here. For your July 19th agenda, we will have an item to initiate a text amendment for signs related to drive-through facilities. So you'll have that opportunity to get that work started next week. And then in relation to infill, that's something that we think is probably gonna come forward later this fall. We've been having some internal discussions on, might there be some opportunities to link that with some topics in the development code update or zoning code update, excuse me? And so we're still kind of working through that and anticipate that there might be some good opportunities for alignment a little bit later this year. So still on the radar, but wanted to let you know what we're thinking at this point in time. And with that, I don't have any other announcements.
Thank you. Item 10, Commissioner's Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. Commissioner Hawkins?
Thanks, Chair. Few meetings ago, we had Alex from Code Enforcement speak to us about if he's allowed to do his job, he needs something with bite to it, if we recall. I would like to see the code or ordinances looked at and somehow give Alex and his crew the necessary tools to give a bite to whoever they're dealing with.
From the planning commission level or from city council?
For land use. It would be a land use.
Additional items? Commissioner Griffith?
Commissioner Griffith, I just wanted to make sure that we noted the Washoe County School District item so that it's, yeah, thank you.
And I would add to that, that the update, maybe not just about some of the things we talked about here, but maybe an update on just where they're at with what they're doing. What's the, we've had that out there and it's been on our agenda for a year or so now. So what's the, what's the status on that?
Mr. Chairman, you're indicating the schools presentation? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sorry, Washoe County School District, WC 1.
Okay.
An update on that.
And so in addition to that, it's, you're including a request for information on overall operations relative to schools, not just the construction of schools?
I think we have heard on a couple of them, and actually Commissioner Marshall, who's not here tonight, has mentioned that as well. The construction arm is one end, but then the staffing and scheduling and operations for that, where they're at there. So just kind of an update broadly to answer this level of question.
And I would just add that the rationale behind that request, if anyone asks, is to meet the findings that we have, particularly for tentative maps that relates to the availability and accessibility of public services such as schools. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 11, public comment. Item for other public comment and any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, we do not.
Does anyone in the audience wish to make a statement on this item? Seeing a shake of the head, I will close public comment and bring it back to, for a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Good night. Thank you.